Good afternoon and welcome back to the Thurston County Public Hearing for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. It's four o'clock and we're continuing on with our public hearing that we recessed from a couple of hours ago. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider testimony on the proposed 2021 budget for Health and Human Services as Public Health and Human Services and Emergency Services. I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board, and we also have Vice Chair Commissioner Mensah zooming in. Commissioner Edwards is absent. We have County Manager Romero Chavez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and we also have the Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis, and Megan Porter, our PIO, is in the boardroom also. So with that, we're continuing on with this public hearing, and I'm going to give all the information for you if you're just joining us for the first time. This is a hybrid public hearing, and those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed comment, or mailed comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager, will provide information along with our Department Directors or their delegates, and it's either on Zoom. And then when we come to testifying, your name will be called. If there's anybody in the boardroom, we'll grab those people first, and then we'll go to the Zoom, then we'll go to the conference call, should anybody have joined via conference call. Do I need to get that number out? The number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN number is 1234.
Wow.
So you're welcome to call in, and you can comment when you're called upon. And today, we are talking, well, let Robin do that. Go ahead and let us know what we're going to speak about in the next hour or so.
Okay. So, this afternoon, we are continuing where we left off, and we're down to the last two departments. So this afternoon, you'll hear about Public Health and Social Services and Emergency Services. Are you ready to jump right in?
You betcha, both feet.
All right, then here we go. We'll start with Public Health and Social Services. Again, this is one of our larger departments, and they have a wide range of services that the department is responsible for. Public Health and Social Services is led by Director Shelley Slaughter, who's here with us today, along with her financial manager, Marcia Boyle. And in Public Health, they are responsible for public health and environmental health, and that includes disease control and prevention, food and water safety. They also provide for treatment for male health and chemical dependency disorders. There are services for the developmentally disabled youth and adults, and affordable housing is one of the many things that they provide, and also services for veterans. And these are just some of the core services of Public Health and Social Services. The proposed budget for 2021 adds disease investigators. It funds the new law enforcement assisted diversion program, or LEED. It's a program that the Board, Public Health, and the Prosecutor have been discussing for some time now. There is a half-time family intervention health nurse added to the budget next year, and funds for a temporary food inspector to catch up the backlog. There are also funds added next year for an environmental health program manager and a temporary communications coordinator. And with that, I'm going to invite Shelley to make a few comments.
Thank you so much, Robin. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today to discuss our 2021 proposed budget with you, as well as members of the public. Again, I want to say thank you so much to not only the Board of County Commissioners, but wearing your Board of Health hat for your support and your leadership, as well as the Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, and the incredible budget team here on the screen today for your support throughout this process. Also, the County Manager, Romero Chavez, as well as all of our dedicated Public Health and Social Service employees, of which we have over 120 that we are proposing in this 2021 budget, that are dedicated. They come to work every single day. They work so hard to help to fulfill our mission of working together to achieve the highest level of health and well-being for everyone, and they do that every day. So, thank you so much. This pandemic this year has really shown how important the role of Public Health and Social Services is to the health and well-being of our community. Over the last two years, we've also faced many other challenges and threats, such as the homeless crisis that the Board of Health declared, the opioid epidemic that the Board of Health declared back in 2018, as well as growing concerns about climate change and threats to environmental health, and also to many other challenges that are facing our department and our community today. I want to, again, say thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and the investment that we are proposing that you make will help us to fulfill our vision of a thriving, hopeful, healthy community where everyone and our environment is protected. And Marcia Boyle, our Senior Financial Manager and Director of our Vital Services Division, is joining me here today to answer any questions that you or members of our community have for us today. That's all I have. Thank you.
I will start with correcting one thing you said, and that is, you said, you were talking about how important Public Health and Social Services is with regard to COVID. And I would change that to say either critical or vital. And you just used the word vital. So, it's so vitally important to have the right person at the right time. And you knew when you took this job, you had no idea this was coming, but you had cut your teeth on some other critical incidents we've had in the county. And so, you at the right time, with your leadership skills and the others of your team, couldn't think of a better team to have in place at this point in time with what we're dealing with, not only with the inside, internal to this organization, but to the entire county. So, I'm not going to say thank you yet, but just wanted to correct that. It's not just important, it's critical and vital. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hutchings.
Yes. Commissioner Mensah, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Then, going back to you, Robin, or you're done?
Public testimony.
Yeah, you're done. Okay, then we'll move on with public testimony. Each individual that would like to testify online, on the phone, or in person, you are allowed three minutes of uninterrupted time for comments and/or questions, and the Director will offer brief feedback, and depending on the complexity of the question, may have to follow up if the answer or if the question is going to be detailed or complex, or what the question is. And then the citizen then has two more minutes to follow up or make comment. And so with that, I will turn to the sheet, and in-house, we only have one citizen here, and that's Mr. Pettit.
Good evening, Commissioners, and good evening, Director. You know, many people do not know that a very, very minimal amount of dollars actually come from the general fund to support your department. I mean, it couldn't be any less money from the general fund in terms of expenditures. A lot of the money is all pass-through money, and it's money that you're carrying out programs that the state has directed. While I have a couple different things I want to note to you, you know, my issues that I have that I would like to see enlarged, hopefully you can get some more funding for it, or there's, perhaps even some of the people that are being assigned with this budget can help out, and that's part of that outreach, perhaps through law enforcement or other, that we can get more people into treatment. You're right, we do have a terrible homeless situation, and addiction situation and everything, and it hasn't really gotten better. And I think that, in my opinion, anything the county can do to enlarge the services down in the downtown area, take over some of the area that seems to be not just outer, but very much taking over the current health concerns there would be greatly appreciated. I want to also make a special note to you that I've had some excellent experiences with environmental health, helping out and getting things directed. I've had a history sometimes of disagreeing. It's okay to disagree with people, even including the doctor. I may disagree with her, but I appreciate the efforts, and I think your team is doing well. I only wish that we had a means to help out a little more, and maybe we need another person in there to work the streets a little bit. So, I don't know. One quick comment. I do have some current concern that the rate of cost for the benefit of the Veterans Fund seems a little disproportionate. It seems like as though we're spending about 60% of the budget on costs, with only 40% of it actually going to benefit direct payment to veterans out of the Assistance Fund, and I would, do you have any particular thoughts how we can help that, or is there a way, maybe we can get extra help in there, involve veterans programs or something? That's my only question for you today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pettit, for your kind words. To answer your question regarding the Veterans Assistance Fund, I wholeheartedly agree with you that investing in supporting our veterans is critically important to the work that we do and our role in the community in our social services and public health programs. The Veterans Advisory Board, which the Board of County Commissioners appoints, recently made recommendations to our Board that they recently approved to expand eligibility for our local veterans to be able to take advantage of more of the assistance that we are able to provide through the Program Veterans Assistance Fund. Last year, also, the Board of County Commissioners approved a recommendation by the Veterans Assistance Fund to expand this. This continues to be a top priority for our department to provide additional outreach to veterans. We have partnered with the Lacey Veterans Hub to increase our staff presence and are ensuring that we do more outreach to veterans, especially during these challenging times due to COVID-19 and the economic impacts that impact veterans. So, we continue to prioritize that, and I think that with the most recent Board-approved investments in expanding Veterans Assistance Funding and Support Services, that we hope more veterans will be able to benefit from that in our community. So, thank you.
So, my other comments, which will go back here to the Commissioners and the Board of Health members, combination of both, but we're setting the budget, so this particular one's to the Commissioners. I previously mentioned about the Veterans Fund and that considering the amount of dollars going out and the continual build in the fund balance at the end of your fund balance, it appears by the end of 2021, you're going to have a reserve that's equivalent to twice as much as what you use per year. What would be wonderful and exciting is if somehow, maybe we can, you can do a budget amendment that can put another person in force to be doing a real outreach to try to find more people. There's lots of people in need, lots of veterans. They have particular qualifications, but a lot of people don't apply because they have pride, and they have a lot of other things that stop them. But there's no reason to be continuing to build a fund balance. If you're just going to build the fund balance, then you should reduce the rate on the taxes of the property taxes that's being applied. I will encourage that the Board takes some more action related to an actual issues of health. There's nothing healthy about what we see down there along Capitol Lake and down in that area. There's nothing healthy about spots where you have drug infested. If you saw somebody laying on the street dying from a heart attack, you get them help, you put them in the hospital. We have people down there that are dying from addiction and from mental health issues that are not getting any services. So, I'm going to encourage you, find a way to reach in the pocket or find a person that's going to find more resources, so that that way we can actually help these people and make a stronger community again. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add that whether you're an addict, whether you're mentally ill, suffer from mental illness, whether you're a veteran, whether you're homeless, the bravest thing that you can say is help. So with that, let's go to Zoom.
So, I got to go on the Zoom meeting with the names that I do not recognize to be in county staff. So, I have first is Ms. Gabby Vasquez. If you'd like to provide public testimony related to the proposed 2021 Public Health and Social Services budget, please unmute yourself. You have three minutes. Ms. Gabby Vasquez. Maybe we can move on, and then circle back. Ms. Lisa Reiner, we'd like to provide testimony.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know that the last speaker just talked about the homeless issue here in Thurston County. Many of us in the community are very, very concerned about the homeless issue, and I've been in rural South County here in Thurston County, and I've seen entire families pull little children out of the forest, their entire families, trying to, because they live in the trees. I don't know if it's an encampment or what it is, but people are living in the trees everywhere. It's not just downtown Olympia. Many of us volunteer for the Thurston County Food Bank, especially during this pandemic. But my question is, is about COVID, and I don't know if we've really, this has been talked about much. I know that COVID, of course, work regarding the pandemic has been huge, and I know that the budget has been difficult for Thurston County to deal with because there's so many needs now during COVID. My question was, regarding masks, I think, I believe our county health official said that masks are mandatory in Thurston County, and I don't know if that's true or not. That was one of my questions.
Well, continue, Lisa. You have another minute and a half.
Yeah, if you have additional questions, please go ahead. You still, yeah, you still have a minute and 20 seconds.
Yes. Well, anyway, my concern about masks is, there's been a lot of talk here in Thurston County, especially in the South County, about some businesses not enforcing the mask mandate. I guess it's a state mandate, and I guess perhaps Thurston County doesn't mandate masks because the state of Washington does. But some of the clients of certain businesses in South County have not been wearing masks. I had heard the sheriff is not going to enforce the mask mandate. I believe that's what the Olympian newspaper had said, along with his brother, who was in Lewis County. My concern is that we have all this money going for COVID, going for the pandemic, and yet we are not enforcing the rules to keep us safe. My concern is that everybody is safe, and we can all get through this in one piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to that, Shelley?
Yes, please, sir. Thank you so much, Ms. Reiner. Thank you for your support of supporting our homeless population. As you see in the 2021 budget, we propose millions of dollars in our homeless response efforts. So, again, thank you very much for that. In terms of your question regarding masks, the Washington State Secretary of Health, as well as Governor Inslee, require masks in public places, especially when anyone is closer than six feet to someone else in an indoor setting. Our department does help to provide education and limited enforcement for that in public places. And so, yes, if you would like to know more information, we have a dedicated COVID response webpage on our Thurston County website, and it includes information for both businesses, as well as members of the public, and information about wearing masks and the importance of it. So, thank you very much for that.
And Lisa, you have two more minutes, if you would like. That's up to you.
So, I don't know. When we talk about the budget money going for these issues, I know that various parts of the Department of Health have their own pockets of money dealing with COVID, but I didn't know. I know Shelley just a moment ago talked about the enforcement, and I didn't know what she was referring to, if she could give a little more information about that sentence. She did spoke about enforcement. That would be great. Thank you, Shelley.
Yes, Ms. Reiner. So, the Washington State Department of Labor and Industries is responsible for regulating and enforcement of employers, but our Public Health Department staff does support businesses with technical assistance, as well as responds to any resident complaints about local businesses in regards to wearing of masks, and we provide support and assistance to businesses in helping to ensure that they are meeting the health requirements. As part of our regular business as well, we regulate all food establishments in Thurston County that have special requirements regarding employee, as well as patron safety in regards to public health requirements for COVID-19, such as wearing of masks.
So, that's as much as the enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reiner.
Thank you.
Let me circle back to Ms. Gabby Vasquez. Ms. Gabby Vasquez, would you like to provide testimony today? One more time, Ms. Gabby Vasquez. Yep, okay, so let's move on to the conference call.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. For members of the public who have joined us via conference call, if you would like to provide public testimony related to the proposed 2021 Public Health and Social Services budget, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have three minutes. Done, sir.
All right. That concludes the Public Health and Social Services. Now, we're moving on to Emergency Services. Robin?
Thank you. All right. So, Emergency Services. Director Kurt Harden is here with us this afternoon, along with Joy Miller, his financial manager. And Emergency Services has two major components. One is to support Medic One response throughout the county, and the other major role is to respond to emergencies. The budget for next year authorizes a placeholder for a potential ballot measure that would increase the tax that supports Medic One, and it adjusts the revenue and expenditures to maintain a healthy fund balance in the funds that support Medic One. So, with that, I will invite Kurt to make comments, if he should like to do that.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kurt Harden, Director of Emergency Services. First of all, I'd like to thank not only the Commissioners, but the budget staff and the viewing public for all the support we've had this year, and all through the budget processes. It's been mentioned by various other speakers, it's been a trying year and a challenging year. With me here is Joy Miller. She's here to answer the tough questions. I just get to answer the easy questions. Also, I'd like to extend a thank you to all the staff at Medic One and Emergency Management. This year, they've had to step up, similar to Public Health, similar to law enforcement and other areas of the county public works, that they've had to do more and had to be creative, like all the county staff across the county have done. So, but the staff here in Emergency Services have done all the heavy lifting, and hopefully 2021 will not be as interesting as 2020. I will tell you that on January 1st of 2020, if you would have told me we had this quality flood, civil unrest, and the Bordeaux Wildland Fire, and then I think I'm forgetting the pandemic, how could I do that? But I would have said, you're crazy. So, I would say that a big thank you, not only to the Emergency Management Staff and Medic One Staff, but also to all the county staff, because they've really had to be innovative in a very challenging year. With that, I will, am ready to answer questions.
And before we get to questions, Commissioner Mensah, anything?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. It's the right person at the right time with the right skill set, knowledge, and abilities, Kurt. Thank you. So, going to the list, we have for public comment, again, three minutes for public comment uninterrupted and/or questions, and then the Director will answer what he can, and then two follow-up minutes. Ms. Pettit.
Yes, Commissioners, Director, I'm going to, I guess I want a little clarity to make sure, because from what I understand, most of the funds that you receive are either through some type of state grants, or, for instance, a sales tax revenue or a particular tax revenue. For clarity purposes, I don't really see anything noting here, anything out of the general fund, although the Commissioners kind of get to approve your funding, and they hold money for when you're going to make purchases and everything. I will have to commend your department. So, first, this question is, where does your funding come from? And I also want to note that I have observed why you're helping And I also want to note that I have observed while you're helping on some major emergencies, there is some very, very significant potential for a major earthquake and the preparedness and how a person can be prepared enough for some of that, if there's any actual facilities in place to be considered, you know, like school locations, emergency gathering locations, et cetera. So, I'd like to know a little bit about that. And is there a need for more facilities than you currently have that's being provided via, I presume, the county? But perhaps I'm wrong about that. So, there you go.
Okay. Quite a few questions, but sure. First of all, I will tell you that that keeps me up at night, is the earthquakes, the preparedness, getting the preparedness message out, trying to ensure all of our residents and Thurston County are ready for a catastrophic disaster. Having said that, let me go back to your first question. Emergency Management does get general fund money. That comes in, and it's just at about, a little over $1.7 million. But you are right, of that, six, a little over $600,000 is federal grants. But the Medic One side, which is the vast majority of the funding in the Emergency Services Department, is a property tax funded through the Medic One Fund, Medic One Property Tax. But we do get somewhat of the $1.7 million out of the general fund, a little over that. And of that $1.7 million, about $600,000 over that is federal grants. As far as the, and I don't want to make sure I answer all your questions, but our facilities, what we do is whenever there's a disaster, and I'm going to use the Esqali flood as an example, we coordinate with the Red Cross to open up a shelter. And depending on the severity of the disaster, a number of shelters. We also have facilities, not necessarily county facilities, but other facilities that we've identified as potential sheltering locations, but we do not advertise those until we've actually activated them, because we do not know, depending on the disaster itself, whether or not that facility will survive the disaster. So, basically, we do have the capability to work, and we do have partnerships with the Red Cross to open up shelters and to be able to house people who are not able to live in their homes. Did I answer all your questions, sir?
I think you answered quite a bit. One short, brief question, because I'm just not sure. Is it currently set up so that you can locate from your Emergency Services, I presume your 911 also, that you'd be able to locate, for instance, where people are with cellphones or devices as such?
I would, the 911 dispatch center is different, and I don't know what their capabilities are, if they're able, I believe they're able to triangulate 911 calls from cellphones. For us, we do not have that capability for triangulating cellphone calls. However, we do have our Thurston Community Alert System, TC Alert, we call it, where people can sign up to receive information regarding hazards and/or disasters or emergencies. So, we encourage people to go to our website and sign up for our TC Alert.
Well, thank you. I'll use remaining my part here to address the Commissioners. Thank you, and thank you to the staff. They've obviously done good. You know, nobody really cares about a lot of things until the emergency comes up. And so, I'm going to encourage that whatever it is that's going to help build programs to provide for people. I've always thought schools should be equipped with generator systems. I don't know what you guys have in your plans, but, but emergencies will come up. I've been through a lot of different ones, big storms, and I anticipate we'll have more. We happen to have a coronavirus emergency this year, but that's not something that, you know, is quite the same as a sudden, you know, October, you know, Columbus Day storm or anything. But I do appreciate their efforts, and I think that this department needs to be, make sure we fully fund them and provide them the things that are going to help all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Zoom now, see if anybody would like to testify.
We go back to Ms. Gabby Vasquez. Would you like to provide public testimony related to the Emergency Services budget? Ms. Lisa Reiner?
Yes, thank you. We have a COVID emergency right now. We have a pandemic going on. I was not fully aware of how much Emergency Services of Thurston County and their budget would deal with this pandemic, per se, such as issues such as protective equipment and budgeting for that. That was one of my questions. I wasn't aware if that was in the budget for Emergency Services to deal with issues dealing with the pandemic, such as protective equipment. Thank you.
Sure. It's in the Medic One budget. So, what we have in the Medic One budget is funding to acquire PPE, and we use that PPE for our EMS first responders that are out in the county. Also, we have created as part of that a stockpile to carry us for a certain period of time in case the supply chain gets disrupted. On the Emergency Management side, we also coordinate for PPE from the state within Emergency Management. And again, having a stockpile created in case there's a supply chain disruption. So, we are working PPE, and we also are supporting Public Health with their efforts with PPE for various facilities, too.
Mr. Harden, you mentioned, for the last comment, you were talking about dealing with people who are not able to live in their homes and dealing Emergency Management for those individuals. Could you elaborate what that entails, please, sir?
Sure. What that entails is, I'm going to use the Esqali flood as an example, the beginning of 2020. When the flood took place, there were people who were displaced from their homes, and therefore, we worked with the Red Cross to set up a shelter where the people could, where people could go to until they were able to get back into their homes. And so, we coordinate that capability with the Red Cross. And I think we had one shelter open during the Esqali flood for those who weren't able to stay in their homes.
You know...
All right, thank you, ma'am. You have two minutes up.
Yep. You have, I think she has additional two minutes. You'd like to wrap up and no additional questions?
I'm sorry, did you say I'm not allowed to ask any more questions?
No, just wrap it up with a comment that you may have.
Okay. Well, anyway, I was going to ask Kurt Harden, how many calls per week or per month Emergency Services has here in Thurston County? Is there a running total or a running average of calls for Emergency Services here in Thurston County? I wanted a general ballpark figure, if that was possible, just to get a handle as to what our need here in Thurston County has been historically. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can, we can get that information and get back to Ms. Reiner.
Yeah. Kurt will follow up with you, Ms. Reiner. Let me go back to Ms. Gabby Vasquez. Would like to provide public testimony this afternoon on the Emergency Services budget. Thank you. Good afternoon. For those who have joined us via conference call, if you would like to provide public testimony related to the proposed 2021 Emergency Services budget, please unmute yourself and state your name. Where you reside in the county, you have three minutes. Done, sir.
Okay. So, that public testimony is, public comment is completed. Commissioner Minster, I turn to you, sir. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
All right. Kurt, thank you for your opening, when you reminded us of the Esqali flood and the fire. What was the other one? I've forgotten, besides the pandemic, there was a third one in there.
Civil unrest support.
Yeah. And I tell you what, when you reminded me, I thought, gosh, that was a couple of years ago, but within this last year, wasn't it, the Esqali flood?
Yes. It was in January, February time.
Yeah, January. So, and those folks are still, that were victimized by that, suffered loss, as well as the fire, they're still dealing with that. But it seems so distant now, because there's been so much that has happened. And that's just, it shows with the nature of Emergency Services, you have to be on it every single time, no matter the day, no matter the incident. Like, as Mr. Pettit said, it could be an earthquake, it could be a snowmageddon, it could, it could be a power storm with, a windstorm with major power outages. It doesn't stop, and you have to be in your crew, ready on their toes and ready to respond. And so, thank you for the job that you and all your team performed for the county and our citizenry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything final, Robin, to wrap up?
Just to say that this evening, wow, what is this doing? I'm sorry, I, I hit a button that, anyway, trying to get back to sharing my screen. You'd think after this many months, I'd know how to work with these Zoom products. This evening, you'll have a public hearing on the Capitol Facilities Plan, also called the County's Capital Improvement Program. That's at 6:00. And then, following that, we'll have open comments on the budget. I will share, once again, the budget highlights, a bit of an economic outlook, and then open it up to comments on any part of your budget this evening, and that will wrap it up. So, I do want to, once again, thank our department directors and their staff for joining you today and making time in their very busy schedules, and all the work that all the teams have done on the budget. And again, thank you, Commissioners, for being here this afternoon.
All right, thank you. There's each department, especially, and I can't say especially, each department is an intricate, intricate piece of this entire puzzle that works together. And some dynamics change, depending on the department that you're in. So, I thank them all as well. Romero, anything to close up?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then we are in recess until 6:00 PM tonight. Thank you.